Welcome to tonight's pre-agenda meeting for October ninth, two thousand twenty-three. Council, uh, Council OB is sick, so we'll be excusing him, but, um, Councilor Simon? You have questions?
Uh, no questions for the agenda.
Councilor Evans, Councilor Baker?
Uh, I have a bunch on the, uh, GIDs. Do you want to go through them now, or do you want to go through them when Weida comes?
I think when Weida comes would be better, yep, and the GID session.
Do you want him to ask them, so that people will be prepared?
I think people will be prepared.
Mayor Protem? Councilor Mammel? Okay, City Council reports. Councilor Simon?
Uh, nothing on City Council agenda. I did take the opportunity to attend the Westminster Public Schools Board Forum at the Grange on Wednesday, but that was it for direct council items last week.
Councilor Evans? That's for me. Councilor Baker? Mayor Protem?
On Wednesday, I attended the press conference for Rockingham Airport, um, and they shared that they'll be, and they had a new truck that will allow them to be able to start doing some of the unleaded fuel. It's not the type that will do all the planes, but they're still moving forward, so, um, the FAA's date is twenty thirty, and they anticipate with their acceleration schedule that they'll be part of before then. I'm not sure, and I saw some follow-up from staff after the fact, that they weren't exactly specific what the date was, but they just, um, said that it would be well in advance of the twenty thirty date, so I feel like that's positive movement or well attended. Um, saw some of our residents there that came up and seemed pleased that something was happening, so.
Councilor Mammel?
Um, nothing from last week, but a heads up for next week. I will not be in attendance on Monday. I'm on vacation for that week, and that also means I will not make the Dr. Cog meeting on next Wednesday, the eighteenth, so.
You got it.
All right, thank you. I've been gone for eleven days, so I'm just, I haven't seen any news until sometime today I saw it, but, um, I've been, uh, with kids in Nantucket, and we took the two pugs, and I think I have two very sad pugs that enjoyed life at the beach and not happy to be home, so they're sort of pouting tonight, but, um, it was great, um, to just get away and see the kids. They just built a new home on Nantucket, and I have kept that secret for three years from her two siblings, and, um, we're finally able to break that silence and share it with everybody, so it was fun. Feeling great, and, um, have one more week of this regimen of pills, and then I get a week off, so it's good. So if there's nothing else, do you have anything?
Two things. Um, for the council, real quick, uh, just an updated, uh, community and city fact card. We'll do those quarterly, um, but, uh, just wanted to make sure that's in your stack of stuff. And then I had a great meeting today with our, our city team specifically about, uh, URAs and GIDs, and although not necessary for, um, your decision-making tonight, but I thought that the Excel spreadsheet captures just some great information about all of our URAs and our GIDs, um, so that's in your packets, um, but, uh, you know, goes into when they were created, you know, certainly their financial position, where they're located, you know, um, what kind of increment is generated, but kind of a one-stop shop, very nice document, um, for your use. Um, and then just a series of maps associated with, um, you, you all probably know these, but I don't, and so the maps were very helpful for me to understand where the GIDs were, where the URAs were, and so those are also in your packet, but, um, just wanted to make sure that we shared those with you, because I found them to be very, very helpful, good information. In fact, we even talked about perhaps, um, you know, posting that on the, on the website might be very beneficial for the community too, but good stuff, and so just wanted to say thank you to the staff for the discussion presentation, and then for where they go. No, they were there.
Right there.
For putting all that together, thank you. Okay? That's all.
Okay. There's nothing else but the good of the order. See you at seven.
Welcome to tonight's meeting of October ninth, two thousand twenty-three. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the Westminster City Council meeting for October ninth, two thousand twenty-three. We thank you for coming and would like to remind all in attendance that our meetings are subject to the rules as a quorum that are posted in the back of the room. These rules are in effect while our meetings are in session as well as during breaks and transitions between meetings. We want to be sure all feel welcome and remind all that there is an expectation that no attendee shall disrupt this meeting and that threats and intimidation are prohibited. Signs and placards are prohibited in council chambers and all attendees shall remain seated in the seats provided, not in the aisles, nor shall the doorways be blocked. Would you please join me in a moment of silence in remembrance and thoughts and prayers for the conflict in Israel? Thank you. Just as a side note, I just had heard from Rabbi Benji with the Shabbat House and tomorrow night at six forty-five at the Shabbat House, they will be having gathering and I'm sure you're welcome. Roll call, please.
Counselor Baker.
Here.
Mayor Protem Demat.
Present.
Counselor Emmons.
Present.
Counselor Azadi. Mayor McNally.
Yes, over here.
Counselor Namela.
Here.
And Counselor Seymour.
Here.
Mayor Protem.
Mayor, I move that we excuse Counselor Azadi tonight.
Second.
It's been moved to second to excuse Counselor Azadi from tonight. He is ill. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to consideration the minutes of the preceding meeting, September twenty-fifth. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three meeting as presented.
Counselor Emmons.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of September twenty-fifth. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to Counselor Namela to present October as Community Planning Month.
Are there any planners here? Well, this is fun. I get to do this one because as a planner by day, so I do. So I got to work with so many of you. This is really exciting. Yes, and I will have you, Andrew, talk about that. I am just very happy that we have such a robust planning department or division in the Community Development Department and planners help shape your community and the development that goes within it and the experiences that you have within it. So I'm going to have you all introduce yourselves. So maybe we.
Sean McCartney, I'm the program planner and designer.
Jim Boschard, I am the chairman of the Planning Commission.
Andrew Spurgeon, principal planner.
David Gurman, Development Services Coordinator.
I'm Nathan Lawrence, senior planner.
John McConnell, interim planning manager.
I'm handing it back to Andrew. I got to see him collect this award last week.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor. Can y'all hear me? Okay. Sounds weird over here. Yes, so we're here tonight for Community Planning Month, which is really, it's Community Planning Month, so it's really not about the staff or anyone in particular. This is about all the contributions from our residents, from our businesses, from our institutions, from our planning commissioners. Thank you, Chair Boschard, for being here, from City Council and everyone who really strives for excellence in planning and we really value all the contributions that people have made over the last year. And we've tried to work with City Council to be responsive to your concerns with growth and development. We have a new front-facing Development Services team, which Dave Gurman is leading, five days a week. Our concept plan review process, which has really increased transparency and invited council to provide feedback early in the process to potential development and adoption of our comprehensive plan earlier this year, which the Colorado Chapter of the American Planning Association awarded a merit award in the general planning category. So we're excited to receive that and thank all of City Council for your help in guiding the culmination of that plan as it was adopted.
All right. Thank you. All right, I'm going to read the proclamation unless anyone else wants to say anything. No? Okay. All right. Whereas change is constant and affects large and small communities, counties, and other places. And whereas community planning and plans can help manage this change in a way that provides better choices for how people work and live. And whereas community planning provides opportunities for residents to be involved in making choices that determine the future of their community. And whereas the full benefits of planning require public officials and residents who understand, support, and demand excellence in planning. And whereas the month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month throughout the United States and its territories. And whereas the American Planning Association endorses National Community Planning Month as an opportunity to highlight the contributions planning makes to the quality of life. And whereas the celebration of Community Planning Month provides the opportunity to recognize the participation and dedication of the members of the Planning Commission who have contributed their time and expertise to the betterment of the city of Westminster. And whereas we recognize the contributions made by the Planning Commission members and extend our gratitude for their commitment to public service. Now therefore, I, Nancy McNally, mayor of the city of Westminster, on behalf of the entire City Council and staff, do hereby proclaim October to be Community Planning Month.
Next, we have Counselor Emmons for the proclamation for National Retirement Security Week.
All right, can I have those who are joining me for National Retirement Security Week come up and join me? Hi. I'm going to have you introduce yourself and explain a little bit about what National Retirement Security Week is. It's the first that I've heard of it and aware of it, so I'm glad that we're bringing this up on council. So just introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about the week.
I'm Lisa Christman, Human Resources Manager.
Kim McDaniel, Retirement Administrator.
I'm Davy Godfrey, HR Director, and this was started by the National Association of Government Defined Contribution Administrators. And so since we have defined DC plans here, deferred compensation and the defined contribution four oh one A, we wanted to encourage everyone to save the deferred compensation. And we're very excited about the changes we're making to our contributions to our four oh one A and thank council for that because it's very good what we do here. Since we don't contribute to social security, it's very good that we encourage everyone to save. And so although this is National Retirement Security Week, we're going to look at next year doing October as National Retirement Security Month that they've got in Congress to recognize. And so we're starting off with a week now and we have some events scheduled for the week, Counselor Emmons, and we look forward to that week, the third week in October. Also, incidentally, for this boy, it's when Alabama plays Tennessee, the third Saturday in October. So it's always easy for me to remember when National Retirement Security Week is. So thank you very much for the proclamation.
I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. Whereas National Retirement Security Week is a national effort to raise public awareness about the importance of saving for retirement. And whereas saving for retirement is a key component of overall financial health and security during retirement years, and the importance of financial literacy and planning for retirement must be advocated. And whereas all employees can benefit from increased awareness of the need to save for retirement. And whereas many city employees may not be aware of the various options to save for retirement or understand the importance of saving for retirement now to achieve retirement security. And whereas although employees have access to the city's deferred compensation plan to assist them in preparing for retirement, many of the employees may not be taking advantage of the plan at all or to the full extent allowed by federal law. And whereas encouraging employees to bring their future into focus during National Retirement Security Week and throughout their career can help them better prepare for retirement. And whereas all city of Westminster employees can benefit from increased awareness of the need to save for retirement and the availability of tax-advantaged retirement savings vehicles to assist them in saving for retirement. Now therefore, I, Mayor Nancy McNally of the city of Westminster, Colorado, on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby proclaim October fifteenth through October twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three as City of Westminster National Retirement Security Week. Sign this date, October ninth, two thousand twenty-three. Thank you.
Next up is proclamation recognizing Indigenous Peoples' Day. And Mayor Protem Demat, would you also explain, you did the research on these next, this proclamation and the next one, and share what all you found out?
Before I do that, I'm going to let everybody introduce themselves. So I think Richie wanted to.
Yeah, thank you. I don't think this thing is on, but I can project pretty well. So hopefully you can hear me in the back, the back pews there. My name is Rich Chamberlain. That's the least important thing I'm going to say tonight. I just wanted to begin by talking about a friend that I had who's left us a couple of years ago. He was a Lakota from Standing Rock. And he told a story that he went down to South America and met with some of the indigenous people who were still living in South America. And he said they were sitting around in a circle in a room and it was silent as it often is if you're in the company of Native Americans. They're very comfortable with silence, whereas people with my background are not. We have to fill it. And he said, we were sitting around and we made eye contact and we all started laughing. And I said, well, why did you do that? He said, because we all had the same thought in the same moment. We're still here. So I would like to introduce Jacqueline Lucero, who has consented to receive this proclamation. And she's a certified peer and family specialist at Advocates for Recovery Colorado. She grew up in Leadville, but she had a great uncle in Westminster who she used to visit in the summer, in Westminster, that she used to visit in the summertime. And she's come back to this area. Her father actually was raised in the San Luis Valley. And his mother was Hicaria, but he was not allowed to practice his culture and his traditions. But one of the things Jacqueline mentioned to me was that he always taught her the seven grandfather teachings: honesty, courage, love, wisdom, respect, truth, and humility. I think there's something we can all learn from that. And she's been able to take some of her cultural heritage, reconnect with her cultural heritage, and use it in her work in recovery. And many of her clients, I understand, come from Westminster as well. And she would also like to say a few words in her native tongue.
Okay. I'm Matak Yapi. Jackie Lucero, Ma Xapi Kishto. Leadville, Colorado, Matahan, Na La Ha'ol Arva'la, Colorado, El Wati. Ina Wai'ekin Gloria Padia, Eni Chiapi. Ata Wai'ekin Lapoldo Lucero, Eni Chiapi. Unchi Wai'ekin Elisa Madina, Na Gregorita Candelaria, Iwi Chakiapi. Kaká Wai'ekin Fidelio Padia, Na Federico Lucero, Iwi Chakiapi. Chan Te'a Wa'Chte', Napichu Zapi Kishto. My European name is Jackie and I am half Spaniard and half Apache. And I have been lucky enough to live in and work in Westminster and do the work that is so delicate for Native Americans, so delicate for Native Americans. There's a lot of shame and a lot of guilt and a lot of hiding because they're afraid. I don't want anybody to be afraid anymore. That's why I get to bring my ceremonial drum and have the women drum and feel the healing of the drum and the way my culture helps one another. Because when I tell you, "Mi Taku Ye O'Yasi," that means we are all related. We're all related. There is only one race, the human race. I'm so grateful to be here tonight. Thank you. Mi Taku Ye O'Yasi.
Steve Brockman, I'm a member of the inclusivity board and very proud of the city of Westminster in recognizing this as a holiday.
Great, thank you and welcome. And I think that what you said actually couldn't pair better with what my intent was. So when this first came to City Council from the staff, there was talk about replacing Columbus Day with this. I am both Native American, I am a citizen of the Potawatomi Nation, as well as Italian-American, as well as a lot of other stuff because my mom's as well as a lot of other stuff because my mom's kind of a mutt and my dad, who thought he was full-blooded Italian until he did one of those tests and found out he's a lot of messless stuff himself. To me, this is very personal. And so my goal was to find a way to unify and really recognize both people. And some of the research, and you'll find this in our agenda memo, when you look at Columbus Day, the reason Columbus Day was started was actually after the lynching of 11 Italian-Americans. So our nation, although I believe wholeheartedly in what we try to aspire to do, we have fallen short many times, and that has fallen on just about any kind of people that have called this home. I know that Native Americans still suffer a lot, and we have a lot of work to do in my mind in different parts of the country where it's a lot harder still to this day, and they don't get the same kind of treatment that a lot of other citizens of this country do. And so my people, the Potawatomi Nation, they were part of what they call the Trail of Death. They were marched in the 1800s to the Kansas Territory. They're now in Oklahoma, and not, quite a few of them died when they were marched. And there are different stories from different trails with all the different people. But point being was I worked very hard with the inclusivity board so that we could find a way that we could honor both days, understanding that, you know, maybe Columbus comes with some negative connotation, but it really is about the people that, you know, our nation was trying to honor, and that was really the Italian immigrants, just like this is to recognize the indigenous people. So that's two different things, and I hate to cross both, but it's really important to understand what we tried to accomplish. And so your words, I think, are very, very hit home with me because that's very much what I wanted to convey to people as we do this. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and read this. Whereas the City of Westminster recognizes that indigenous people have lived and flourished on the lands known as the Americas since ancient time, and the City of Westminster is built upon ancestral homelands of indigenous tribes. And whereas semi-permanent encampment of Arapaho peoples in the vicinity of Gregory Hill gave course to the future settlements that would become the birthplace of the City of Westminster. And whereas Colorado encompasses ancestral homelands of 48 tribes, and currently the City of Westminster is home to the descendants of indigenous tribal nations. And whereas the City of Westminster recognizes the values, the vast contributions made to our community through indigenous people's arts, culture, knowledge, and skills, and through these contributions, the City of Westminster has developed and thrived. And whereas Indigenous People Day was first proposed in 1977 by delegation of the Native Nations to the United Nations-sponsored International Conference on Discrimination Against Indigenous Populations in the Americas. That's a mouthful to go through. Whereas United States endorsed the United Declaration of Rights of Indigenous People on December 19th, 2010, and Article 15 of the Declaration reads, "Indigenous people have a right to the dignity, diversity of cultures, tradition, histories, and aspirations which shall be appropriately reflected in education, public information." And whereas the City of Westminster desiring the strength in our community and increase resilience by acknowledging the good and as well as the detrimental past. And whereas the City of Westminster stands with those who stand for justice and humanity. And whereas the City of Westminster condemns all acts othering in shape of overt acts of microaggressions. Now therefore, I, Nancy McNally, Mayor of the City of Westminster, on behalf of the whole City Council and staff, do hereby proclaim the second Monday of October as Indigenous People Day in the City of Westminster and call on the people of Westminster to join together in honoring the resilience and contributions of indigenous people in our community and across the country. Signed this ninth day of October, 2023. Nancy McNally, Mayor of the City of Westminster. I'm going to give you that.
One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Counselor Baker will present to Mayor Protem and an American Italian and the inclusivity board the proclamation for Columbus Day. Inclusivity Board, you need to come back.
And if we want to have, okay, the inclusivity board join us, that would be great. Well, I will let these introduce themselves.
Counselor Emmons, Italian-American.
Counselor Demott, like I said, kind of a mutt, but also Italian-American.
Rich Chamberlain, Irish and Scottish. I shouldn't be standing next to Bruce, he makes me look short.
Steve Brockman. I have always thought of, okay, really Columbus Day as one of the first steps our really country took towards inclusion because we lived in a very stratified society. And if you didn't arrive on the Mayflower, you might be looked down on a little bit. And as, well, the Mayor Protem, okay, Demott said, this was actually done after a rather gruesome crime in New Orleans where mob rule took over. And I view it as Italian-Americans joining with other Americans, and that's why it was so nice to have like Indigenous People Day because we all are Americans. So whereas more than 500 years ago, after, I mean, the securing, I mean, the support of Queen Isabella I and King Ferdinand II of Spain, Christopher of the Columbus became the first of many Italian explorers to arrive in what would later become known as the Americas. And whereas, well, this event set, well, the world on a path to, I mean, the birth of a new nation founded on the idea that all people are, were, I mean, they created equal and all born free with the right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, an ideal that must continue and strive for and assure is really provided to all Americans. And whereas many Italians would really follow his path in, well, the centuries to come, risking poverty, starvation, and death, well, in the pursuit of a better life. And whereas today, millions of Italian-Americans will continue to enrich our really countries, I mean, the tradition and really culture and make lasting contributions to our really nation. They are really educators, healthcare workers, scientists, first responders, military service members, and public servants, among so many other vital roles. And really whereas in, I mean, the commemoration of really Christopher, really Columbus's, I mean, the historic voyage 530 years ago, well, the Congress by joint resolution on April 30th, 1934, modified in 1968, as amended, has, I mean, the requested, well, the President proclaimed the second Monday of October each year as really Columbus Day. And really whereas things have not always been easy for, well, Italian-Americans, prejudiced and violence often stalled, well, the promise of equal opportunity. But the hard work, dedication to, I mean, the community and the leadership of Italian-Americans in every industry makes our country stronger and more really prosperous and more really vibrant. And really whereas Italian-American, I mean, the community is also a cornerstone in our nation's close and enduring of the relationship really with Italy. And really whereas the City of Westminster stands with all who stands for justice and really humanity and condemns all act of othering in the shape of overt acts or of microaggressions. And really whereas by really recognizing marginal groups, well, the city brings awareness and really provides education about such groups with, well, the goal of unifying a really community through understanding and acceptance. Now really therefore, I, Nancy McNally, Mayor of the City of Westminster, and on behalf of the entire City Council and staff, do really hereby proclaim the second Monday of October as really Columbus Day. And then, well, the City of Westminster and call upon residents to join in honoring, I mean, the resilience and the contribution of, well, Italian-Americans in our of the community. Signed this ninth day of October, 2023.
Join us, sir. One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you.
That brings us to public comment portion of the meeting. It's an opportunity for the public to communicate with City Council. Each participant will be given no more than five minutes on any topic they choose. Public comment is not intended to be a back-and-forth discussion. If there is a public hearing scheduled for the item on which you wish to speak, please hold your comments and testify when the public hearing is called. Tonight, there is a public hearing on rezoning for the Midland Lofts planned unit development and a public hearing on the 2024 proposed budget. This evening, we have zero emails and zero voicemails. City Clerk Fitch, would you please call our first live speaker?
The first live speaker is Karen Calaviti. First of all, I want to bring up, I wasn't planning to speak about this, Karen Calaviti, 9940 West Cliff Parkway. But I thought we were going to be honoring Italians who didn't cause the slaughter of many Native Americans. There's Mother Cabrini, an Italian woman who was someone to be honored, who, and I don't understand why we're still talking about Columbus as a great Italian. He came over to exploit and destroy. There's nothing great about that. Whereas Mother Cabrini took care of orphans, and she was a noble lady of Italian descent. And I thought we were going to start talking about Cabrini Day instead of Columbus Day. Anyway, also, I want to say that we must have empathy for the Palestinians involved, not just the Israelis. The Palestinians have been under the thumb of the Israelis for many years, and that they had enough and are fighting back is not, we have to feel for the Palestinians in this situation as well. But my main subject here was to talk about the environmental assessment situation that went on with the water treatment plant on Thursday. And you can either look at it as a laugh, a joke, or more disturbing than ever. But, you know, it comes out to be that that beautiful site that's home to prairie dogs, bald eagles, burrowing owls, all sorts of wildlife, has mature cottonwoods, ponds, streams, wetlands. And as far as the water treatment engineers, all it is is square footage to be bulldozed over to put concrete structures. I mean, we asked, people asked about the prairie dogs. Oh, that's passive relocation. And I know what passive relocation it is. It's bulldozing first, and then whatever prairie dogs are left and want to move on, that's a passive relocation. As far as the bald eagles, that idea was, well, when they migrate. It's like nesting pairs of bald eagles do not migrate. I don't know what kind of ecologist those people have, but they're not very knowledgeable. Anyway, the idea was after they migrated, they'd cut down the trees with the nests, and that would be the solution. And it's like, oh, my God. It was disgusting. That was brought up, well, you know, there's cracks in the concrete at Semper. And it's like, well, why don't you fix the concrete cracks at Semper rather than destroying a whole site for $150 million? And that's only half of the capacity of Semper anyway. I mean, the whole thing was just appalling as usual. So I wanted to talk about that. And I also want to talk about the Uplands, this business of bulldozing everything first without any construction plans and giving the green light. And then people get their pictures in the paper about, you know, colluding with the Uplands people. I mean, it's just, it's just hard to take. It's really hard to take. Anyway, those are my comments for now.
Thank you.
Sorry, give me one second. That's okay. The next speaker is John Palmer.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm not sure how many of you counselors up there have seen the official city organizational chart. If not, I'm sure the city clerk could provide you one. But you notice what's up here at the top? It says "community." That's above you people. You need to start listening to what the community says. It's not all about you, it's about the community. Okay, next, let's talk about Uplands. Today, I would consider their first foray into their project over there. Numerous violations. Most importantly, the land disturbance permit they violated, they were not supposed to go into the flood zone down at Lowell and Shaw. They were supposed to stay 100 feet away from the flood zone. They didn't. They took Shaw out today, they took Shaw out all the way down to Lowell. Now we have no means to protect Shaw Boulevard in the way of hazardous waste or anything coming off that property. They didn't put anything there for erosion control. Bad. I talked to the city about this. Unfortunately, now it's all over with, it's said and done. So I guess it's easier to beg for forgiveness than to ask permission or follow the permit. Okay? This is day one. All day long, I witnessed semi-trucks moving up Lowell from Shaw, where they were tearing up Shaw Boulevard, all the way up to 88th, East on 88th. Big semi-trucks, no covered loads. I take that back. Maybe one out of every eight loads was covered. But that's passing by an elementary school as well as all of the houses. There's no reason they couldn't have taken those semi-trucks out the same way they brought them in across the farm, not contaminating Lowell and doing damage to the street. I realize we don't have a weight limit on our street, but Lowell's not in the best of shape. We can't have this for the next five, six, eight years with Uplands and their construction No dust control up there either. They started scraping today. There was no mitigation of any type, no water put down to mitigate the dust. Again, the uncovered loads and the dust, those are Colorado health items, CDPHE. Now, when I talked to the city, they told me, well, Uplands is putting in a fire hydrant at 88th and Federal. That's all fine and dandy, but if you don't have your pieces in play, why are you starting to move dirt and not controlling the dust? Furthermore, they have one of those big overhead water storage tanks up there as well as a water truck. There's no excuse for what's happened today, day one. I can already see I'm going to be on the phone daily with the city, city manager's office, with the shenanigans that are going on with the Uplands and is being allowed to happen. Let's move back to a couple weeks ago and the asbestos removal permits. The asbestos removal permit for the house, they were up there a day early doing asbestos Doing asbestos removal. And everybody says, no, they weren't. Well, then why were people in PPE, personal protective equipment, and respirators? You don't do that for your health, or you do that for your health, you don't do that for fun. Then when they started tearing down the barn, the big block building you all stood next to for the groundbreaking, they started early before the permit was in play, and they went well after the permit had died. Is this going to continue on? Because this is the first couple weeks. Somebody needs to put their foot down, step down. I don't know who it is, if it's the council, I don't know if it's you, Mr. Freitag. I don't know who it is, if it's the council, I don't know if it's you, Mr. Freitag, I don't know if it's you, Mr. Andrews, but we need to get this under control. The neighborhood's up in arms about all of this. Next, also, there's several of the Westminster street signs up there on Shaw Boulevard now that it's been torn up. Those, those signs are city inventory. There's no reason they shouldn't be gotten back and put into the inventory. Stop signs, speed limit signs, they're just up there in no man's land now, unless we're just going to let Uplands have them too. They cost me a taxpayer money to have those signs put up there. And finally, we've got elections coming up here in a couple of weeks. Everybody will be getting their ballots. I hope everybody listening takes an opportunity to vote. This is our opportunity to change the city's future. You need to look at the ISB ticket or the Karen Clavety ticket. It's the only, it's the only way we're going to right the ship here. The city's out of control at its current pace. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Jim Fenimore.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, staff. Appreciate the opportunity to come in before you and speak. My folks moved up here in 1959 from Oklahoma, where we got a lot of Native Indians, so I do have that in my blood also. So I appreciate you guys recognizing the Native Americans. At any rate, my grandfather and my father had the contract to do all the brickwork for Shaw Heights. So all these houses down in Shaw Heights, my grandfather and my father did the brickwork and a lot of other buildings here in Westminster. So Westminster is very near and dear to me. I am concerned about the Uplands development is the real reason I'm here this evening. I'm concerned about the traffic that's going to be on Federal. When you've got 2,350 homes being developed, you've got somewhere around 86,000 square feet of mixed commercial use going to be in that area. Really think there's going to be big problems down the road that's not being planned for right now. I called CDOT, talked to them, and I've also been trying to do as much information, get as much information as I can as how we're going to try to make Federal Boulevard more accessible for the traffic. We really need to have three lanes going from the Boulder Turnpike north. And I've even been to, you know, council with Federal Heights, seeing if they've gotten involved because they are on the corner of 88th and Federal. So I would really hope to thank that City of Westminster, the City of Federal Heights, the County of Adams County, and CDOT would do some more projections because I'm hearing that there was a meeting two years ago that was proposing what the, CDOT wanted Federal Boulevard to be. If you're over on Federal Boulevard anywhere from 2:30 in the afternoon until 5:30 and 6 o'clock in the evening, traffic is horrendous all the way from 92nd south to the Turnpike. So I would like to see and find out what, what is being proposed. I have, I've been in construction, as I said, my grandparents were farmers, ranchers, contractors, along with my folks. And I've been in construction most of my life and I've done, I worked for a developer and I've, you know, taken dirt, just like we've got right down here for the Uplands, and put in streets, city sewer, water, all the underground and power. So I know what it takes and it takes good planning is what it really takes to make a development that size. And I think that's probably the largest development in the City of Westminster right now. So, you know, I'm not here to dog anybody, but I would like to make sure that we are checking all the balances with the access to Federal Boulevard. It needs to be widened, the developer, you know, they need to be putting in some cost. CDOT needs to be putting in some cost. You know, this is, this is for we, the people. You folks, you're citizens of the United States. I'm a citizen of the United States. We need to look out for one another. We're the citizens of Westminster. And if, you know, I'm 67 years old, so I've been here 65 years. And like I said, this is important to me, otherwise I wouldn't be here speaking to you. So at this point, thank you very much, and I look forward to seeing better things happen for our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Tom Lampeau.
Welcome.
Hello, thank you. It's good to be back in front of Westminster. I'm here to pray for the city and its people. Unity is what God is wanting at this time, so it's a good topic for tonight. Please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father in Jesus Christ's holy name, we invite you here to the City of Westminster. Thank you for your presence amongst us. This is your city. You are the Creator and Ruler of all. It states in Psalm 103:19, "The Lord has established his throne in heaven and his kingdom rules over all." You rule over all as a loving God that has given us free will to make our own decisions. 1 Corinthians 10:23 states, "I have the right to do anything," you say, "but not everything is beneficial. I have the right to do anything, but not everything is constructive." So with free will, we sometimes make choices that can be harmful. Guide us with your loving touch and direct our paths. Proverbs 3:5 through 6 states, "Trust in the Lord with all your heart and lean not on your own understanding. In all your ways submit to him, and he will make your path straight." Help us to trust in you and guide in our decisions. We're less than a month away from being able to vote for those that will serve us here in Westminster. Give us wisdom. You want our leaders to stand and not do things as politicians, but as children of God in a political position. So assist us in electing those people who will look at their positions as an opportunity to further serve you. Recently, across our country and worldwide, many significant changes have taken place. What we see happening is a manifestation of the unseen. As the spiritual battle wages on, we see chaos, but you are the God that brings order from chaos. In John 8:3 through 11, it states, "The teachers of the law and the Pharisees brought in a woman caught in adultery. They made her stand before the group and said to Jesus, 'Teacher, this woman was caught in the act of adultery. In the law, Moses commanded us to stone such women. Now, what do you say?' They were using this question as a trap in order to have a basis for accusing him. But Jesus bent down and started to write on the ground with his finger. When they kept on questioning him, he straightened up and said to them, 'Let any of you who is without sin be the first to throw a stone at her.' Again, he stooped down and wrote on the ground. At this, those who heard began to go away, one at a time, the older ones first, until only Jesus was left with the woman still standing there. Jesus straightened up and asked her, 'Woman, where are they? Has no one condemned you?' 'No one, sir,' she said. 'Then neither do I condemn you,' Jesus declared. 'Go now and leave your life of sin. Order from chaos. You've already won the battle, and we declare your victory. Please now bring order to the chaos we live in. In your precious name we pray.'" Amen. Thank you, and you have a nice night.
Thank you.
That was the last person I had signed up.
Thank you. Next, the city manager's report.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, councilors, ladies and gentlemen in attendance and anyone who might be watching online. So a couple of things to share with everyone. First of all, next slide. So our city update, a couple of things here. First of all, the economic development team here at the city has launched our housing needs assessment. And the staff and our project consultant launched a webpage and there's a survey out there. And so if you'd like to provide input or background information or any thoughts, concerns, et cetera, as far as housing needs here in the city, we encourage you to visit our city website slash business slash economic development slash housing needs assessment. And so that's out there and available. We certainly look forward to gathering that survey data. Also, there will be community engagement opportunities both during October and November. The next opportunity is a community workshop, which will review draft information and provide input. And that will occur Wednesday evening, October 25th, from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. at the MAC. We will have some snacks available and also childcare for anybody who needs it, but would love to see a nice turnout from our community on that. Also, we encourage folks to come join us as we celebrate the 66th anniversary of the city charter. So our city charter, which is our foundational governing document, was adopted during a special election on November 7th, 1957. The charter grants the mayor and the city council home rule authority and allows our elected leaders to implement governance structure that best suits the needs of our community. And so prior to the council meeting on October 23rd, from 6:00 to 6:30 p.m. out here in the foyer, we'll host a, a small reception and celebration with light refreshments. And we encourage everybody to come out and join us for that. But just something that is appropriate for the city to do. Next slide. Some Westy wins, engaging our residents in housing needs. So we have an exceptional staff member, employee, community leader, her name's Molly Tare, and she is our housing coordinator. And she was invited to lead a session at the 2023 ICMA International City County Manager Association Conference on Engaging Residents in Housing Needs. She proposed the topic with an eye towards the work our city would be undertaking in this housing needs assessment, and she was also able to connect with other cities that are performing comparable studies. And so great opportunity to showcase what we're doing here in Westminster and certainly what we're planning to do with the housing needs assessment. And then, you know, what a wonderful opportunity to share that with other communities across our nation. Next item on there is the city received, this is awesome, a grant to support a fully electric zero-turn Toro mower. So the grant was about a little over, or a little less than $23,000. The city put $10,000 toward the mower and we'll get that thing up and operational. A picture of it there to the left. And then Wolf Run Volunteer Project, our parks team hosted 46 volunteers, all age groups from Westminster stake of, stake of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints for their annual day of service project. And so they work down at Wolf Run Park, small projects, tasks, help tidy the park up and improve the overall aesthetics of the park. And so a nice volunteer opportunity for those church members. Next slide. Some things to know, tomorrow evening, public meeting to discuss adaptive reuse of Sheridan Green Elementary School goes from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. at Sheridan Green Elementary School. This is the third public meeting that we've had with the residents in the area and the community at large. We certainly are going to be bringing, I think it's four final proposals, and we're interested in hearing everybody's feedback as far as how the community and the residents of the neighborhood would like to move forward. Inclusivity Board meets Wednesday evening this week, 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. It's a hybrid meeting, either online or in the CMO conference room upstairs. The artifacts pop-up museum hours, I mentioned this last week, again, October 7th through the 29th. And Wednesdays through Fridays, it runs 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. Saturdays, 11:00 to 4:00, Sundays, 11:00 to 4:00, but it is closed on October 21st. Our next city council study session will be Monday evening, October 16th, right here in council chambers. The city charter celebration, as I mentioned, goes the following week, October 23rd, 6:00 to 6:30 p.m. out here in the main lobby. And then, as I mentioned, that housing needs community workshop again goes October 25th, that's a Wednesday evening from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. at the MAC, and we encourage folks to come out and participate. Next slide. No information-only items this evening. Next slide. And as always, the city wants to be accessible, responsive, transparent, and certainly accountable. If you want to contact the city, you're certainly welcome to do that. If you want to contact my office, you can do that at 303-658-2006. Email me directly at mfreitag@westminsterco.gov. And you can follow us on Twitter, or correction, on X. Like us on Facebook, check us out on Instagram, or ring our bell at next door. Any questions? That's all I have this evening.
Any questions? Brings us to city council comments. Councilor Seymour.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to use my time this evening to recognize Mr. Chris Gray, who recently passed away after a lengthy battle with cancer. I, along with many current and past councilors, were part of outreach to our Westminster businesses through retention meetings and visits and biz walks where we drop in on business. Many of those, I got the honor to participate with Chris. Chris worked in economic development throughout the state for over 30 years and with the city of Westminster for the last 10 years. His work contributed to creating thousands of jobs, and he was responsible for multiple businesses locating to Westminster. His work was especially critical with Ball Aerospace and Ball Headquarters locating and expanding here in Westminster. He was well-known and respected throughout the entire state and left a legacy of contributing to our strong economy, and he will be missed. I'd like to recognize his wife, Helen, who is with us tonight. Helen, thank you for sharing Chris with us.
I, I worked with him also, and, and I don't know if he ever got angry. He was such a man of grace and always had a smile, and you could see his brain going no matter what people but towards him. He said with a smile, you know, we'd figure it out or whatever, but he truly was a man of grace and we're sorry. Anyone else? Councilor Nermella.
I just thought I'd add, I'd pile on because I really enjoyed working with Chris for many years in economic development, and he was just an amazing person, not just a colleague. And I'm just really sorry that he is gone far too soon because he just added so much to the team and to the city. He really cared about it, so.
Seeing nothing else, that brings us to, do I have a motion for consent agenda items 8A through E? Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the consent agenda items 8A through 8D.
Counselor Emmons?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass consent agenda items A through E. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demott?
Yes.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Nermella?
Yes.
And Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-0 vote.
That brings us to a public hearing and first reading of Council's Bill 46, rezoning for the Midland Lofts planned unit development. I will open the public hearing. It is 7:55, and we have a staff presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem, city councilors, John McConnell, interim planning manager here to provide you with tonight's presentation. Next slide, please. For tonight's public hearing, a staff agenda memo has been created and has been properly noticed. The agenda memo, tonight's presentation, newspaper notice, certification of mailed notice and posted notices are hereby entered into the public record. Next slide, please. The Midland Lofts Plan Unit Development is located on the west side of Irving Street, approximately 200 feet north of West 72nd Avenue, and is addressed at 7255 Irving Street. The site is directly across Irving Street from the MAC and three blocks north of the Westminster RTD station. Next slide, please. Approval of the rezoning preliminary development plan and official development plan would allow for the adaptive reuse of the existing Midland Office Building to create 10 multifamily units and eight live-work units on the 1.06 acre subject property. The project features one-way-in and one-way-out vehicular access from Irving Street and direct pedestrian access from each unit to the sidewalk and bicycle infrastructure along Irving Street. Landscape improvements and existing trees surround the site, and new landscaped areas are proposed internal to the site along with 36 off-street parking spaces. Next slide, please.
Just a second, we lost our conversation. John, can you pause for a second?
There we go. Whoops, it's gone again. Okay, I think we're good.
Staff finds that the rezoning and PDP generally meets the criteria in the Westminster Municipal Code 11514. The proposed land uses, including multifamily and live-work, comply with the property's comprehensive plan, land use designation of commercial mixed use. The project will be well-integrated into the existing transportation networks and will function as an effective infill project in the area. A traffic study is required along with the ODP. Staff has identified no issues with existing street capacity in relation to vehicular traffic. Direct access will be provided from all residential and live-work units to the Irving Street sidewalk and neighborhood bicycle infrastructure, which connects to nearby commercial businesses, bus stops, and Westminster Station. The only exception requested from the traditional mixed-use neighborhood development design guidelines is relief from the requirements for all parking to be located internal to site. Given that this is an adaptive reuse project and the existing building is set back from Irving Street 30 feet in order to provide parking in compliance with these city requirements, some parking needs to be maintained along the north and south sides of the building. The proposed parking is set back well behind the front facade of the building, and neighboring properties will be screened with plantings. Next slide, please. Staff finds that the official development plan is in conformance with all city codes, ordinances, and policies. The two-story height and scale of the building is in keeping with the surrounding retail development, and building setbacks are in keeping with those in the immediate area. As mentioned, parking will be screened from Irving Street with new vegetation. An existing fence and row of dense vegetation along the north side of the property will screen parking from the school recreation fields. New landscaping planted along the southern and western property lines will screen parking from adjacent properties. Minimum overall site area landscape has been proposed to be reduced to 27% from the typical 40% requirement. A maximum amount of impervious surface has been removed while still allowing for adequate off-street parking and emergency vehicle access. New landscaped area will be densely planted with low-water plantings. Architecturally, the existing brick will be restored and will continue to serve as the primary facade material. The addition of metal panels, new windows, patios, and balconies will update the architecture of the building to have more of a modern expression. Next slide, please. Staff recommends that the city council hold a public hearing and approve the rezoning, the PDP, and the ODP with the finding that they meet the criteria set forth in Sections 11514 and 11515 of the Westminster Municipal Code. Next slide, please. The Planning Commission voted in favor of recommending approval of the three applications by a vote of 5 to 0 at its August 22nd, 2023 public hearing. Next slide, please. Staff finds that approval of these applications would meet the city council's strategic plan priorities of shared sense of community through the provision of 10 new units of housing and eight live-work units that will be integrated into the surrounding community and also the goal of robust infrastructure through the incorporation of thoughtfully designed transportation and stormwater infrastructure systems. The applicant is here with us tonight and has a presentation to share with you, and I can be available and happy to answer any questions that you have for staff.
Any questions at this point? I see none, so.
Could you give me a good, really, definition of a live-work unit?
Yes. In fact, in this case, the live-work definition is defined on page 2 of 16 of the official development plan, by the way, of 17 live-work standards. So in general, though, speaking, a live-work is a place of residence for someone who also has a small portion of it dedicated to a commercial use, such as an office open to the public, a retail outlet, or some other commercial use that is owned and operated by the person who lives in the apartment.
So wouldn't this then entail visitors needing a parking space at this property?
That's correct. And the parking requirements have been met for that. And in fact, the parking is exceeded. There are 28 parking spaces required, including for the live-work units, the commercial areas. The applicant has provided 36 spaces.
But he wasn't able to provide the 40% landscape?
That's correct. That's largely due to the nature of the adaptive reuse of this development. Much of the existing building and site is paved. And so the applicant is incorporating some additional landscaping. Staff finds that it's appropriately scaled for this type of adaptive reuse.
Okay, we'll have the applicant's presentation. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. I just want to start off by thanking Mayor, Mayor Protem, councilors, and staff for allowing us to present this project to you tonight. My name is Dennis Finn. I'm Littleton, Colorado with Metro Design Group. And my partner here, who's helping to present as well, Nicholas Antonopoulos, and I'm the architect on the project. So we're presenting for the owners of this project. We are proposing to convert the existing two-story building through an adaptive reuse and extensive remodel in order to create 18 dwelling units, eight of which will be live-work units on the main floor, and then there'll be 10 standard residential spaces on the second level. If we can get the next slide. So the existing building, this actually is a picture, a recent current picture. It has not been occupied in a while, and it is, you know, in need of repair and other things as it goes along. So that's part of what we want to do, is restore this building. The existing condition, the building and the site lends themselves to savings and an adaptive reuse rather than to demolition and a total redevelopment. Only a PUD can allow the needed latitude and provide the site-specific standards that are otherwise impossible to achieve under existing prescriptive zone districts. However, we are not substantially diverging from any multifamily residential design standards, and we do comply with the specific intent to the Westminster Comprehensive Plan. We are not adding to the existing building massing or height nor to the intensity of use. In addition, we'll be able to correct the internal site drainage along with other related issues on-site through this process. Next slide. So the main floor will have the eight live-work units. It's an ideal solution for, you know, your kitchen table startups and your freelancers. It's essentially a space that combines your workspace with your living space. So essentially, you know, you're working at home with a dedicated section for your office. For these units, we will be following the Fairer Housing Act as far as adaptive use of the units. And they'll have the following features, an accessible building entrance on an accessible route, accessible common and public use areas, usable doors, that's usable by a person in a wheelchair, accessible route through and into and through the building, light switches, electrical outlets, thermostats, and another environmental controls in accessible locations, reinforced walls in bathrooms and later for later installation of grab bars as needed, and also usable kitchens and bathrooms. Go to the next slide. On the upper level, we will have 10 residential spaces. These spaces will have new energy-efficient windows and doors, amenities like large outdoor decks for every upper level unit. It'll enhance the livability as well as express the multifamily nature of this building. Can I have the next slide, please? We plan to enhance the existing building by saving and restoring the brick facade and by using new materials and features to bring, sorry, to bring the existing structure up to date. In particular, the front facade shall be enhanced with an entry feature expressive of the updated idiom of the new design and to allow it to truly read as a main entrance. The provision of generous balconies with permanent canopy covers, metal railings, new column supports, and new cladding to complement the existing brick masonry will give the building new dimension, depth, and distinctive quality that will bring it back to life. Next slide, please. The energy efficiency of the building will be brought up to current standards and beyond. With the building systems, HVAC, electrical, plumbing, to be fully replaced, all windows and doors shall be replaced with new energy-efficient and operable units, and in most cases enlarged with features like transoms to provide more natural light to penetrate the interior of the units. Each live-work unit on the main floor shall be accessed directly through a private mini courtyard rather than through a conventional common corridor, which will further distinguish the live-work use from standard units and enhance the feeling of entry and home. Next slide. Site considerations include the provision of a large common green space, buffering the rear of the building and its access from the parking area. Also, the site configuration allows for convenient and adequate parking while still maintaining the needed landscaping in order to bring the overall functionality and appearance of the project to a higher standard than the norm. On, excuse me. New onsite drainage improvements will help alleviate flooding in the property to the south as well, which has been a longstanding problem. So in closing, we think that by transforming this long-blighted site in use and function, as well as design integrity, we will be enhancing both the site itself as well as the surrounding community in a meaningfully, in a meaningful and economically viable way. Thank you. That's all we have, if there's any questions for us.
Okay. Any questions at this time, Councilor Baker?
Yeah, just out of curiosity, how much more water will this reuse need concerning, and how much sewage, more sewage is going to generate compared to its original incarnation?
That's a Dennis question. Yeah, so a complete study hasn't been done. We're looking at actually reusing the same sewer and the same water that we currently have, the taps that are into the building. So therefore, we really wouldn't use any more water or sewer. There's a question about the irrigation. Now, all of the landscaping that's going on site is low-water use. So we don't anticipate having to have a separate tap for the irrigation as well.
That's odd because I, because, I mean, this was an office building before, correct?
So it was originally, so it's, look across the top, it says Midland. So it was originally a bank building, a Midland Bank building. Most recently, to my understanding, it was actually a school. So a school would have a lot higher occupancy than what we're proposing for this site.
Thank you.
Oh, Councilor Nammella?
I'm just curious, doesn't really weigh in, but just are you, is it a rental project versus ownership?
Yes, what our intention is in moving this forward is to have this as a rental property.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mayor Protem?
One thing that I didn't see in the memo, and I'm just curious, bringing this building up to current standards, is the plan, would it be sprinkled? I don't think that it currently is, and so that would be brought up to code.
Yes, absolutely. I think virtually everything in the building has been demolished and gutted, whether it was through our own intentions or the intentions of people who occupied it unlawfully. However, yeah, all the, all the systems, so to speak, are going to be replaced completely.
Great, thank you.
I see no other questions at this time. Thank you for presenting. And I will now close the public hearing. It is 8:13.
Mayor?
Yes.
We do have people signed up to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
The first speaker is Karen Colaviti.
Thanks. Welcome.
Yeah, I'm glad to see this building reused. I guess it's a little quirky, and I was hoping maybe to see a little bit more architectural features that included the columns. But I, it would be great to see that building reused. And this seems like a good way to do it. I, I have a special place in my heart for the old Westminster downtown, and as much reuse that can happen is the best. So to me, this seems like a very good plan.
Thank you.
The next speaker is John Palmer.
Welcome.
Thank you, good evening. Personally, I don't care one way or the other if it gets built or rebuilt, but I do have some questions that need to be addressed. Looking at the pictures, is, are we expanding the footprint of the building or is it staying the same footprint? I think that would be good to know. The second floor, will that be ADA accessible? Meaning will there be an elevator or lift of some type to get people up to the second floor if they go up there to rent? I never heard a potential cost for rental of any of these units, ground floor upstairs. I think that, again, is a pertinent question that should be answered. Will the units have gas or electric appliances? Will they be LEED certified? And will the bill, will the building be turned to a solar building for power? And I wasn't quite sure about Councilor Demott's question about will all units be fire sprinkler systemed upstairs and down? And here's a couple biggies. Currently, we all know what's been going on down there for years. We've had the druggies down there, the homeless, whatever you want to call them, the unhomed, down there with fentanyl, meth, and God knows what else. This unit needs to be cleaned up and certified before we start doing anything in there in the way of moving families or residents in prior to their start of construction. Not, not the certification they had five years ago when the charter school was there or whatever it was. They need a current certification that the building is free of meth, fentanyl, and whatever else. Next question, have there been any kind of surveys done for the ground pollution that's leached over from the old gas station there at 72nd Irving that had leaky gas tanks? This building's right behind it. I understand we're not going to break ground, but still benzene products have leached into or under that building. Has there been any kind of surveys or studies done for the protection, again, of the residents and children and businesses that will be moving in? I think those are my questions, and it would be nice if you guys could get them answered or at least get some of these answered for the general public, just so we all know. And again, it's not that I'm against the project. I just think there's several questions that weren't answered that need to be. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Gerald Nunes.
Welcome.
Hello, Mayor, councillor, staff. My name's Gerald Nunes, born and raised, Westminster.
My name's Gerald Nunez, uh, born and raised Westminster. Um, went to Vista Grande, Shaw Heights, and Westy High School. So, Westy Warrior, um, as, as y'all know about Westminster. Um, as far as the building, I live right there off Seventy-fourth and Irving Street. This building's off Seventy-second and Irving. It's been a eyesore for about seven to ten years now. Um, love to see something done with this building. It's a beautiful building, brick building, um, love the architecture of it. Would hate to see anything to happen to it other than what they're doing as of right now. Um, that being said, I think it'd be positive to our neighborhood. Um, we got the MAC across street, the park. If y'all know, the playground caught on fire. If we had more residents there, um, that probably wouldn't happen because we'd have more people there in the area. You know, there's a lot of bums that like to stay in that area right there where, um, nothing's been done for a while. So I would love to see something happen with that building, it being lit up. Bums wouldn't come around as much, and I'm not saying bums are bad. I'm just saying, you know, drugs have played a big role in our, in our society lately. And I believe this building being put forth and it, ground getting broken and getting done, I think it's going to do good for our community, especially the live-work space, um, with the Vasa across the street and everything else going on. I think it's going to be really good for something to go forward there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Gus Nicholas.
Welcome.
Thank you for having me. Um, it's nice to see the whole council, finally. Um, my name is Gus Nicholson. I live in Avon, Colorado. I bought this building in two thousand four. I sold it to my partner, two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, pre-COVID, something like that. Um, I have continued to be involved in the building even though I'm not an owner. And as I'm sitting here, I'm thinking back to Sarah Normella because a few years after I bought it, I remember I looked you up when you were in the planning department and I said, "Sarah, what if we repurpose this building?" And I remember her response was, "Bring us a proposal. Give us an idea." Um, what you see in this building today is when you don't have an idea. And if this plan goes through, you'll see what this building can do for this entire part of Westminster when you do have a good idea. Um, I want to answer Mr. Palmer's, at least two of his questions. Um, both of those ex-gas stations have no further actions attached to the properties. They've been fully mitigated as far as the state environmental department is concerned. This is Colorado's certification. Secondly, the water table underneath that property flows down toward the creek. So the water flows away from this buil- this building, this property. It flows under those two gas stations across, what is that, Seventy-second Street, and goes down toward the creek where the, where the transportation center is. So as far as pollution is concerned for this property, that should not be a factor. And, and that's verifiable. We've had, uh, environmentals, we've had, um, surveys, uh, and we've seen the, the water tables and, and those sorts of things. Um, I, I want to tell you very quickly that when I did buy the building, I had, I thought Westminster was a place in London. And I'm, uh, I, I, you know, I became involved with the city and, um, I was responsible for bringing the charter school into the property. Um, the charter school was fine there for a while, but then the, the head of school decided to play some games with us and wanted to get out of his lease and wound up finding another location for their school down by Regis University, further down Lowell. Um, they were forced by, um, the Colorado courts to continue to pay us rent. Um, uh, there were no takers for the property. We, we really at that point needed to look at redeveloping the property. And as long as there were these things hanging over it, um, the net result was basically a vacant building. Which I know when, when I was the owner of it, we tried very, very hard to keep people out of it. But I myself would go into the building and ask people who had, you know, set up camp there to leave. Um, there have never been any, uh, drug factories or drug facilities or manufacturing facilities of any kind in that property. There certainly have been homeless people who've thought of it as a home for as long as, uh, they could stay until they were chased out either by the Westminster Police, which has been very responsive, or by, uh, myself or the current owner. So again, these should not be factors. Um, the, the, uh, the idea of preserving the basic building is great because the building is very solid. Just before I turned it over, we put a new roof on it. And the man who put the roof on it was an ex-marine who'd been in the business for years and was very proud of the work he did. Um, there are even metal caps on the parapets, not just the top-level membranes on the, on the building. So the building is, has a great roof, it's, it's got solid bones. And to see it repurposed this way is, I, I hope that as this process unwinds, that you'll support it because I, 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 I can only see that it can enhance Westminster. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was the last speaker I had signed up.
Thanks. Okay, city council questions? Pretty good. That brings us to closing the public hearing and it's eight twenty-four. That brings us to motion to pass Councilor's Bill number forty-six. Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to pass Council Bill number forty-six on first reading, rezoning the Midland Lofts from B-one business to planned unit development.
Uh, Councilor Emmons?
Second.
Is there any, it's been moved and seconded to pass Councilor's Bill number forty-six. Is there any further discussion? Councilor Numella?
I just wanted to say I'm, uh, really happy to see this building being repurposed and I truly hope that the project comes to fruition. So thank you for the effort you've put into it and, uh, also for staff to figure out a way to make it happen.
I agree. Um, it has been, it has been an eyesore for the last few years and I'm always turning it in for graffiti. So I know PD's going to be thrilled with something happening because they won't have my emails to deal with, but, um, so thank you for bringing it up forward. Um, roll call, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Demont?
Yes.
Councilor Emmons?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Councilor Numella?
Yes.
Councilor Seymour?
Yes.
And Councilor Baker?
Yes.
The motion passes on a six-zero vote.
That brings us to A-nine, move to approve the preliminary development plan. Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the preliminary development plan, an official development plan for the Midland Lofts planned unit development. This recommendation is based on the finding that the rezoning preliminary development plan and official development plan are generally supported by criteria set forth in sections eleven dash five dash fourteen and eleven dash five dash fifteen of the Westminster Municipal Code.
Councilor Emmons?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass item A-nine, the approval of the preliminary development plan and official development, development plan for the Midland Lofts. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilor Emmons?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Councilor Numella?
Yes.
Councilor Seymour?
Yes.
Councilor Baker?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Demont?
Yes.
The motion passes on a six-zero vote.
I'm just checking in. Does anybody need a break before we start the next public hearing?
Uh, Mayor?
Yes.
Can I call for a break, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
We will take a break.